I have got four points. Number one, this is free money. Number two, it's free money.
That's enough. You can stop there.
And number four, helps people. But I did want you all to know about this. This is the third year of the grant and it's just a pass-through grant that we get from Voca. And since we have started this position, the person who's in this position, Ms. Katie Strayhorn, she is here. She's done over 120 applications for victim compensation. To the date of 11/1/2019, there has been paid out from Voca $150,000 and $45,000 of that in Dawson County cases here in the circuit. And we think that's going to go upwards above $50,000 to victims for the various things that they have: EMS, hospitals, doctors, funeral home, crime scene cleanup therapists that might result in local dollars having to cover ground to last. So that's what Voca funds are used for. And the program information has been sent out to over 900 Crown victims. And we had placed three DUI memorial signs in Hall County and Dawson County because it's a circuit-wide thing that's passing through dual. But it's so it's been a very excellent use of grant money that's been given us and I appreciate you all approving it once again. Thank you so much.
Questions for Mr. Dare. It's my understanding that this needs to be sent back by November 15th? I read that correctly?
Yeah.
So we probably need to move this to the voting session at 6 o'clock to make that happen because we don't meet again until the 17th, or 21st, I mean, so.
I wonder why do we even have to vote on something?
There's money coming in. You have to accept money.
Yeah, I think you do.
Changes the budget, so you have to, it has to be accounted for, so.
Well, we want it.
But I will say, we're talking about Ms. Katie, she does an excellent job. I have to say, I've worked with her on several occasions in my prior life.
Katie Strayhorn is here. She's the one right there under the grant. And she has been in Dawson County for many years.
Yes, she has.
But we recently put her in this grant position to cover the whole circuit.
And you've done good there. You've learned that you did very well. You've done real good. All right, so y'all give a move of that at 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation, special event business license application, Kathy Ruse, TNT Fireworks Planning and Development Director, Jameson Kinley, Jameson.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have any more points of free money, but I'll do my best. Before you had an application, it's been submitted and completed by TNT Fireworks and they will be setting up, they were wanting to set up in the Walmart parking lot. It's a lot similar to the application over the summer for the 4th of July. No exception here is it does not include the English parking lot this time. But they want to set up, sell fireworks December 26th through December 31st. And she apologizes she can't be here today. She recently had an operation and I told her that that was okay, but if there are any questions, I'll go into her as quickly as I can.
Questions for Jay.
Last time we had some extensive discussions on the nonprofit that was benefiting from this and it was outside the community. Did she secure a nonprofit that's within Dawson County?
She did not, no. She still with the La Crosse.
That's what I was trying to find it.
He still says the La Crosse.
But she did show, and I did work with her with some things, and she reached out to several dollar organizations. There just wasn't enough interest, so the La Crosse Rooster Club decided to support it again.
And that was the last, and did she reach out to other ones this time around? Because I think, I remember us having the conversation that we would help facilitate that with more advertising and things like that. Do you know if she reached out to more of this go-around?
I do not know if she did this go-around or the last go-around when she did reach out. She mentioned that they were coming back, you know, for, they would be resubmitting for New Year's and possibly another, another time, so.
And she's committing to this next go-around this time to have a Dawson County Level 3 commitment.
It's, it's difficult to have someone support it because those volunteers do have to show up, you know, arranged, there was time, and actually man and sell the fireworks. And there's a lot of nonprofit organizations that, that don't have the capabilities to do that.
Same like she talked about there before.
She did. But she did say that she was going to.
Trying to do.
I think you did provide her the list of stuff.
We did.
Oh, I know this, the, and I know where Walmart is, but there's different addresses. It says 156 Power Center Drive and then it goes to 98 Power Center Drive. What's all these different addresses?
There's a lot of them. Well, Walmart is at 98 Power Center Drive, but they also obtained all the way to 158 Power Center Drive. So there's just a little confusion there, which I believe that we corrected in a couple of different spots.
Well, like on page 16 of my thing, you know, it's at the top, it says 156 and then at the bottom, it says 98. And I didn't, you know, I didn't know if there's this significance to that or not.
It could be just the, the significant difference could be the difference between their, their eyeglass location and the.
Location and property.
Well, I know when I order my medicine, it says 156 Power Center Drive, so I didn't know what the 98.
That's a good possibility. The 156 could be their pharmacy.
Did we ever, I think the question came up last time too, did we ever confirm whether the sales tax revenue was generated off the sale of this comes back to Dawson County?
Yes.
Okay, sir, it does.
From the time for 10 to 10 every day?
Yes. Yes, sir.
If I read that correctly?
That's correct.
Yep. Other questions?
I think I have the same question. But also, doesn't part of the permit stay with the fire department? They get something off fireworks from education, prevention.
I think that's state, that's state level.
That's just a state level? I didn't know if it is this, this permit stays here.
Not that no, that comes directly back to Dawson County Fire Department. I'd have to ask.
There's something we get, something we get off for the county, but it's for fire prevention.
When the state approves.
Educational and care, because some goes to hospitals too.
Yeah. I think when the state passes a law, changes the law to state level, they'd be able to do this.
Do they have to be licensed with the state?
Yeah.
That's probably the country. Other questions for Jameson?
The dates again will be what, the 26th through the 31st? Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have a presentation of land use resolution update, planning and development director, Jameson Kinley, and Paige Hatley and Bill Ross and Associates. Whoever wants to go first?
I took this off, and that's okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right. Perfect. All right. So, beginning May, the board proposed the addition of two residential classifications as well as wanting to take a look at, closer look at our procedures as well as rewriting things in our land use resolutions. Soon after that, it was our P put out, which was awarded to Bill Ross and Associates. Our first meeting with Paige was in August and we discussed several routes as how we wanted to get what really is before you today. Today is the first two different updates. This contains the addition of the two residential classifications, RS2 and RS3, which is two and three units per acre. It's what those, those numbers stand for after the, after the residential sub-world. We also clarified special use and conditional use portion of our land use. We kind of simplified that down just into the, a one special use category. We also removed several areas in this document that referred to a single and sole commission. And finally, we updated language that was asked by the county to add some flexibility with the compliance to the future land use map. And we want that to be approved along with this as well. We simplified this document by creating charts that will not only help us, but also help the public quickly and efficiently identify what uses that are allowed in zoning classification. Should the board, it should be the pleasure of the board, this will go before a public hearing in the planning commission and then back before a public hearing with the city commissioners. And then we will come back once again to finalize the version and address all the additional commercial that we are continuing to work on. And I'll turn to Paige to kind of walk us through some of the more technical portions as they are addressed.
Thank you very much. That's a great overview. I really don't have much to add other than just a very quick walkthrough of some eye candy here. These are basically a representation or a representation of much of the residential chapter or article in the land use resolution, which is this many pages. We've taken all of the standards as they relate to allowed uses and dimensional requirements for building height, your setback minimum lot size, and have converted that into first what we call a principal use table, which is just, I believe it's two pages. We've taken the uses that are either allowed by right, those that currently require special use approval, which of course means they need to come before the board of commissioners for review and approval. And then any blank space indicates that currently these uses are, that they're not allowed in a particular district. So at a glance, then a user can see this table and understand what use is allowed in a zoning district. You'll notice on the left-hand column, it says NAICS reference. That's, that stands for the North American Industry Classification System. NACE codes are assigned to every business based on activity type. And while residential uses of course don't have NACE codes, there are some non-residential uses, a few of them that are allowed currently in some of the residential zoning districts. And we thought that it would be helpful to, in processing business licenses, which requires a NACE code to be submitted for a business, that'll allow more to checks and balances or facilitate the process when the application is submitted and the review is done by Jameson Stack to make sure that yes, this use is appropriate in a given district. And then on the right-hand side, there's a column that says C-section and it's referencing a new section that follows the table, where again, we've taken all of the existing, often repetitive and sometimes as things have been cut and pasted or copied and pasted over time, theater conflicts that arise, slight changes in tests, so inconsistencies and difficulties with interpretation. We've taken all of that and boiled those standards down into just two pages. And what I mean by that is everything that relates to bed and breakfast requirements. It's repeated several times. Now it's listed in one place and the user is informed, go here to see what else is required for B&Bs, short-term vacation levels, et cetera. And then the next one, the only, the other table that follows, so this was just the second page of the use table. This is now taking everything else that's left with respect to the dimensional requirements for the residential districts and is pulling all existing standards into a single table. So you do have a series of footnotes, but we did get it on one page and so that it's as a reference, rather than having to flip from page to page to know what's required in a zoning district, you can see it in one place. This table also does show the proposed two new single-family residential zoning districts that are building off of the existing RS district, as Jameson indicated, just allowing slightly smaller lot sizes contingent on availability of sewer. So that's sort of the technical. It's just another way of presenting information that you already have. Anything?
No, another question. Yeah, a lot of our questions that we get are, you know, what are, when people look at it, they'll say, what's the difference between RSR and RS R and that? And so the table really allows you to kind of put those side by side and there's a lot of flipping back and forth and highlighting and things that were greatly putting those charts out there as well as the entire document itself would really help, like I said, not only my, my department, but also the public helping out with our land use resolution.
Questions for either one? All right, a question, I have a couple of comments. The board's glad to be listening. Would say the board's glad to be getting to this point because we've had much discussion in the past couple of years in reference to our land use ordinances and how outdated they were. And I appreciate the comment that you made that go all the way back to the sole commissioners. That tells you how old they are. That's when they were created, back when we had sole commissioners. So that tells you that it happened probably in the early 90s. The gentleman that created zoning was Mr. Jolene Cox and he left Dawson in 93. So they're created before that. So that tells you how old they are and how outdated they have been. So I'm extremely proud to get to this particular point where they're being updated. And I will also commend you on the tables because looking through that simplifies it by a whole lot. And I'm not much on knowing the different classifications, but I can look at this and I can tell you the classification's really simple. And your second table that gives you the, whether you have to have a septic tank in a well or water or septic or both or whatever, is also good in how many houses you can have per acre. So the simplicity of the tables in themselves should make it easier for the people who come to plan a new zone and should make it simpler for your office as well to be able to pass on that information that people are requesting without the increased confusion that we see from time to time. And also, I think you made mention too, in reference to the, looking at, the board looking at qualification in there in reference to our future land use plan, it talks about mandatory acceptance and the board having the opportunity to have some discretion in that as well. So I'm glad to see that we're looking at that as well. Ms. Davis, do you have anything you want to?
Yes, well, you know, just in light of the changes and the new classifications that are being put in place and the new recommendations, which I think you have before you in draft form, you know, as mentioned, we'll need to go through a public hearing process, which takes some time. And to the extent that these are going to make some sweeping changes with offering some new classifications for zoning as well as potentially changing how we might view our land use plan, one opportunity we would have is to place a moratorium on acceptance of rezoning applications to ensure that applications don't get in the hopper, that don't have the benefit of these new changes. And if that's something that you're interested in, I would suggest that we could do that at tonight's meeting and then set a course for how we would direct staff and draw some associates on moving forward with the public hearing process and set out that schedule. So that's something that's available to us and frankly, would be recommended, I think, to ensure that we don't have this gap period of applications coming in when we have intentions for new regulations to be in place before we can get them in place lawfully.
What was the timeline on the moratorium?
Well, my recommendation would be for it to be no longer than needed, you know, really to get the amendments in place. I would propose, based upon just looking at what roughly our schedule would be with respect to noticing this public hearing, which is one of our biggest, you know, that's our biggest gotcha because we have to depend on the newspaper when they'll accept the ad and when it can run. And I think based on that, I would propose that the moratorium on the acceptance of applications for rezoning run at the earliest, so whichever comes first, February 7th as the outside date. But I think we can get it done much quicker. So it would be either February 7th or approval by the board of commissioners of the amendment to the land use resolution as proposed, or after we have another public hearing and the extension of the moratorium if necessary. If we get bogged down, then I would want you to conduct a public hearing before extending the moratorium. Or if you take any action, you could, you know, could lift it at any time. So an outside date, I believe, of February 7th.
Is that the beginning?
The end.
The end.
If we, if we voted, if we considered this tonight, since I think tonight is going to launch off in a public hearing process, and I think we've left some direction from the board tonight on doing that, to tell the staff to move forward, assuming that that's the direction to move forward and implement this good work that Ross has done, then we could also simultaneously adopt the moratorium tonight at the work, at the voting session. That way, we're working in tandem and get the benefit of having these amendments move forward through the public hearing process, which of course goes before planning commission and we need to walk it through and get all, you know, vetting publicly as we do any land use decision or resolution update. And that would allow us to not have applications coming in in the interim. But I would propose we do those things, if that's of interest to this board, that we do it at tonight's voting session. We could add that to the agenda for adoption of a moratorium and then you provide us the direction to move forward at that time on the public hearing process.
How many public hearings?
We'll have a hearing before the planning commission and then before your board of commissioners, according to our orders.
Okay.
So not two before us?
And then just one.
And as of right now, this, what we are proposing is that this come, this will come back before November 21st, BOC to move forward with the public hearings. And then the 17th would be the planning commission and then the 19th would be the final public hearing before the board of commissioners for this update.
December, December 7th.
December 17th, planning commission, December 19th for the board of commissioners.
And obviously, if we needed to, if we had more dialogue about it, needed to be extended, that's the reason for the moratorium being to a point where it covers that time.
Right, exactly. And so with that kind of accelerated schedule, you know, February 7th probably is the outside date, but I would propose that, that that might be something you would consider, that we would give ourselves a little bit of room in case it comes before you and then that's a public hearing, you, you know, hear information that causes you to want to revisit it further, then that would get us into December. And I think our schedule, December, we do have two meetings, so yeah. So I still think we'd have it done, if delayed, it's probably first of January.
Other questions? Y'all, was that only agenda from 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Frank, get a load.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a presentation of RFP 35419, request for proposal for consulting services for 53 overlay district and 400 corridor district update, planning and development director, Jameson Kinley and personnel manager, Melissa Hawke.
Listen, you have to. Maybe we just tackle it together, can we, sir, Dave? Can we just tackle it together?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I guess I'm going to help Jameson with this this afternoon. I hope I don't have my blackened toby spot. I hope I can read through this with you guys.
Oh, my goodness.
So as we know, no, that's okay.
That helps.
So as we know, State Route 53, oh, I can't see at all. I'm very busy.
That might be a good thing. They have.
And it's something that we definitely need to attend as far as the commercial development. And back in July of 2016 and October 2017, the B plus C Studios had done some preliminary work on the document for the overlay district for Highway 53. It was decided on December 20, I'm sorry, September 21st, 2017, at the direction of the then planning director to go ahead and cancel that contract with B plus C because he felt it could be done in-house. And unfortunately, no further work has been done on that at the time. And the current planning director has asked the BOC permission to release our P document that we did to get this updated and completed. And at the same time, the board had decided that they would like to see pricing on updating the 400 highway development and design guidelines that was adopted December 2000. So that's been quite a while. Jameson, you're back.
Absolutely. So what we have here is a map of the current 400 corridor, the south portion and the north portion. And we also included just an area, kind of a general slalom, 53, one reaching from where the 400 corridor ends to the town of County, the other one coming from really the top of Gover Hill all the way to the city limits.
So of course, we did according to policy and it went out to well over 80 possible design groups, but we received only one proposal. And that actually was from B plus C Studios, which is a good thing because they are very familiar with at least the 53 portion of it. So here are some of the services that will happen on both documents. They will do an evaluation of what we have existing in the codes and the actual documents that we have for those guidelines. They'll work with county staff to determine what their parameters and visions are to update those documents. There'll be public participation and involvement plan. As you see there, there's four actual phases. They'll identify the potential solution and approaches and that will be recommended over to the county staff for discussion. They draft a final development revision to the existing codes where it might be needed and the documents to ensure that they're in compliance with all the laws as they should. So there were three people who did this evaluation. That was Jameson Kinley, Parmeny Gee, and Keith Wilson. And although there was only one proposer, they did, as I said, go through the whole process of evaluating that separately. We called references together as a group and these are the actual outcome of the actual scores. And they did receive that 88. Here's the pricing and we had them divide that up for task one being the 53 and task two being the 400 so that you could either award together or separately as you chose to do. And the planning staff has respectfully requested the board to accept the proposal submitted and to award the contract as you seek it, not to exceed the 96,000 for both documents.
Question?
I guess the thing that jumps out briefly quickly is the, an update is almost as expensive as a whole new, starting from Cleveland Slate program for 53. So what drives the cost of an update to be just as much as a?
Well, we first have to go back and look at when the last 400 corridor was created, which was 2001. Planning has changed dramatically since then. So I wouldn't say that we're starting over in a sense, but in technologies, lighting has changed. There's a lot of new state and federal regulations that would, that need to be taken into consideration. So essentially, you know, it drives the cost.
And also take into consideration that the 400 guidelines were sent by a completely different company. So they, B plus C would have to go back to the beginning to re-read, to revisit everything that was done back in 2000 and a lot of changes have been done to ordinances since that time too. And B plus C is the ones who did the original preliminary work for 53, so they're already familiar.
Right. So I guess my follow-up and final question on it is the, I noticed that the 400 north district, what you call the north district, is not included in the 400 overlay. And looking more long-term, if we look five, 10 years down the road and what's happening in Lumpkin County with the hospital situation, it seems like that would be something that if we don't do now, we need to have planned to be able to address in the near future with a, with a plan laid out for that corridor as well because I see that that hospital system up there, right there on the border, is going to create some pressures in between 53 and Lumpkin County line.
Absolutely, absolutely. And our ordinance now does refer to that northern portion of the 400 corridor. It just doesn't do it as intensely as it does, you know, 53 South, where, which obviously is what we've seen the most of the development so far. And you're absolutely correct with the development of that hospital is something that the planning department does need to focus on.
Would it, I mean, is it too big of a lift to include that and extend that 400 area up higher compared to where we have been in order just to protect that field and that design that we don't want to get too outside without having any regulation over it?
Yeah, and apparently what's proposed, does the, the corridor does go all the way to Lumpkin County?
But it's separated out north and south.
It is separate out north and south.
But it is the same regulations for both north and south?
Generally.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I didn't know, I thought the 400 open was just that session or that section that you have highlighted in brown, but it goes all the way up, correct?
It does go all the way.
Okay, okay. But this price update, did that include that?
That includes that.
Okay, got you, got you, got you. Okay, cool.
Can you bring some quiet, just one bit? Did I hear you say you spent up to 80?
At least 80, because it goes out on the Georgia procurement registry and there's at least 80 there. You could just throw answers.
You could just throw answers up in the air and catch which one it might be because without actually trying to do a survey on those separate contacts if you really wouldn't know why.
Call the good to come.
Yeah.
Lots of work.
What'd you say the last time? I lied, I said that was my last question. The last time we had this thing bid out. What was the last time we had bid out? What did BNT quote that out?
Two thousand and sixteen.
What was that quote then? Was it about?
It was very close to the same thing.
I was thinking it was about fifty thousand, I was like.
Yeah, it was, um, I'm gonna say thirty-nine thousand for one portion of it and about forty-five thousand for a second portion.
Where is this company located?
I honestly don't know that.
You don't know?
That's a question.
Oh, okay.
Obviously. Other questions?
I guess the budget for this, where's it?
That's, I've got a question here. How is this funded? Question mark.
It would be my assumption that the company's one balance.
Okay.
Because there's no contingency or.
And, and that approved with this, uh, beyond next year's, I mean, it's, when, when do they start?
Within the two weeks of your approval, they are supposed to be in contract.
Okay.
This budget, when does it, so it pays out, it doesn't pay out day one, it pays out on delivery?
They normally will bill as they go along with whatever work and they have to be very discreet in what they're being paid for.
So I mean, the timeline, the timeline of the whole process is what?
I think we put in two years.
So it, it, this spreads out ninety-six thousand over two years.
And that would be for both documents to be completed.
Yeah. But your outline, your funding is over two years potentially.
Correct.
Public participation, I understood, reading it was four or six months.
Absolutely. Yeah. You want to have your one and an overlay, you want to have as much, uh, input from, you know, the, the already current property owners and the business owners in that area. So there's a, there's a plan to lay out a report six months in which we have those, those public hearings for those, that input.
Can I look into that?
Any other questions? Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation, request capital improvement element adoption, Planning and Development Director Jameson Kenley.
I think I'm in a spot here. Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, we are, uh, we have, on October third, the DOT voted on the capital improvement element to push it forward to the, uh, PCA, in which they reviewed it. They sent back two minor comments. Uh, they gave, uh, permission to go ahead and, uh, send it to the Board of Commissioners for approval. Uh, we, those comments have been addressed and, uh, you have it before you. The only request I have is that we move it to tonight's voting session to, uh, keep it into compliance with the C A regulation.
Good with that?
Do you remember what the comments were, the capital comments?
What?
Anything in nature?
Both of the comments were regarding the, uh, the part of the financial report and the fees. Uh, it, it, it appeared that we were, we may have been over, uh, calculating what would be administrative costs, but it was just a, it was just a miscalculation and misinterpretation on, on probably my part that I included in there that shouldn't have been. So it was just addressed fairly easily and quickly with the help of, uh, Vicky and easily explained.
On page one eighty-two, is this the most up-to-date impact fees?
Oh, no ma'am, this is not the, uh, the most updated. This is just through fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Yeah, one of the things that we did on this one, uh, was the fact that we actually had collected impact fees. We hadn't the previous five or six years. So, uh, throwing all the numbers in there, it just looks a lot different.
Other questions?
Y'all good to put that up at six o'clock?
I am.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next up, presentation of twenty twenty local maintenance and improvement grant application, approval request for the Board of Directors, that is Keith Davis.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, before you, this, at this evening, this afternoon, uh, request some authorization to apply for our annual twenty twenty elmig application. This is the standard local maintenance and improvement grant through, uh, Georgia Department of Transportation. There's a big logarithm based off population, road miles that DOT has statewide. Um, we receive approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from DOT. We're required to match that thirty percent. Historically, what Dawson County has done is use in-kind services. We use our own labor, um, our own, uh, equipment. And we do the work ourselves. I have, uh, had several discussions with the city staff. One of the roads that we had identified is Perimeter Road. And you'll see the list there on, I believe your packet's page one ninety, if I'm not mistaken. Perimeter Road is one of the, the roads that's listed there. What you'll see on the county's portion is three different sections of Perimeter Road. Those are the three sections of Perimeter Road that are unincorporated Dawson County. That's, that's our responsibility. This Monday, I went to the city council meeting, um, and the city council approved the city's application, which is matching the other portions. So much like we did Burke Creek Road a couple of years ago, when the city gets their elmig, plus the additional funds that's required for Perimeter Road. They will just give us tho- those funds to the county and then that'll go towards our, um, elmig's responsibility. And we will do all of the work from Perimeter Road, which will be from nine south to nine north. We'll cross over fifty-three and go to nine north. That section from nine north to Shoal Creek Road is not, uh, in as much need now for attention. So, um, one thing to note for Perimeter Road, uh, if approved, then we will, uh, perform that work starting June first. We typically like to do our elmig work April, May, but I'm not going to subject myself to that during school, so we will wait till school is out. Couple other roads there you can see on the list, uh, Sundown Subdivision. If you're familiar with Sundown Subdivision, that's off fifty-three, um, going towards Forsyth County. Joseph Lane and Goswicke Drive, those are two roads off of nine north. Um, and then, uh, North Seatick. Various scope of work, um, on several of those roads there, um, dependent on, on the, um, the shape that the road is in. Got a couple of different maps there. I think in your packet, you also have a map of the, the breakdown of the city. Again, like I said, I, I did go to the city council and they did approve their portion of, uh, Perimeter Road, um, on Monday. Attempt to answer any questions?
Questions for Dave?
Per, Perimeter Road and Allen Street, where they meet, is that us or? You know what I'm talking about?
I think that's the case.
So with the new subdivision that they've approved and putting in there on Allen Street and the park access on Allen Street, is there anything that we need to look at in the next twelve, eighteen months on improving that intersection? Because now it's just a, a three-way, not three-way, it's a, it's a stop sign, um, a T. So with the increased traffic level there, we've done any looking at that?
Yeah, the, so yes, the, um, something that the city staff and I have talked about is how their developments affect our roads, whether they're, this is an example, there's another one.
That would be a yes.
Yeah. Um, and Perimeter Road is another example where there was some paving done that was on the county's portion. Uh, we did inspect that. Um, so I did review the traffic study, um, for what it was worth that was there and the level of service for that intersection didn't change. I'm not telling you there won't be any level of service drop or that it won't be worse. Obviously, the peak times A M P M is going to be an issue. I don't want to say an issue, it will be more challenging at that intersection at that time. I mean, if, if you're referencing signalizing or anything like that, it is nowhere close to meeting the trips for signalization.
I, I just continue, you know, I, I go through there every day, go up with kids off of school and everything gets backed up and backed up and backed up. I mean, every year we're sitting more constraints at that intersection. That's, I mean, I guess it's just landlocked basically.
Yeah, something that we've talked about and I have talked about with the, the school board is extending turn lane storage because they're getting in that A M peak time and I'm in that same line you are. If, if you're not there by a certain period, you're going to be sitting in the traffic light.
Right.
And extending those storage lanes really in all directions. Um, Perimeter Road is not a big issue because it's a, there's a center turn lane there. There's a dual left turn there, so.
I was just thinking, while we have this elmig money, does it not make sense to, to maybe put a turn lane on perimeter or have the city contribute to widen that intersection? Put a turn lane on Allen Street or something like that?
To utilize the, the county's portion of those funds on that portion of the road? No, that, that's, that portion of that road is municipal. The intersection is the county's.
Right.
But extending that turn lane would be into the city and I, I could not recommend that.
I guess put a turn lane turning on to Allen Street because now the traffic is backing up where people to go around, if you're turning on to Allen Street, the traffic is backing up in front of Robinson. People are getting into the turn-in lane on perimeter to go around them. So if we put a turn-in lane to turn on the, I mean, we get that traffic out of that main lane is what I'm.
Right-hand turn lane on.
A right-hand turn, yeah. It, it maybe had the school board help contribute to that potentially. I, I, it's just, I'm just throwing an idea out.
And we, we are actively on those exact discussions now and I, I use that term, the school board contribute that because it's not needed any time other than in the A M and P M school.
Right.
During the summer, it wouldn't be used at all.
Exactly.
So.
Okay, but you're engaged in that. I mean, I'm just thinking as economies of scale, if we're doing this, then we might as well try to piggyback that at the same time where we're already mobilized.
Yeah, for the, for the, for the record, this is just a resurfacing project that we're proposing here. There's no new lanes, no new, no new storage. This is just resurfacing what's there.
Other questions for Dave?
Kelly Ridge, I'm going to steal our county manager's thunder. I think he was going to report on that if I may, Dave. Uh, Kelly Ridge was started this week. They, uh, got about a thousand feet mixed, uh, today. Um, you know, we're going to be dodging weather here for the next couple of weeks. And within the next forty-five to sixty days, that'll be paved from the bridge to the four-way. Um, my staff will be doing the paving. Shep Coe, contracting, who is our standby F D R contractor, is who's doing the mixing. What we have relayed on social media is please be patient, it is going to be immense. Um, but that is, uh, it will soon be a brand-new twenty-year, so yes, it started this week.
Other questions for Dave? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have presentation, request for additional funding for increased attorney fees in juvenile court. Chief Financial Officer, Vicky Nada.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, I'm here today on behalf of Judge Burton. She had training that she had to attend, so she asked me to present this for her. As you all remember, over the last couple of years, we've had to continually add funding for the juvenile, um, lawyer fees for both family and for the children. And so this year is no, no exception. So, um, what she is requesting is an additional sixty-three thousand dollars to be added from, um, general funds fund balance to pay for the child and parent legal representation. She's hoping that this requires another amendment a year, but still may have to come out a little more time once this one comes out. Right now, there's, um, a dollar and ten cents.
And both?
Left, and both those. So, um, it's, it's kind of necessary that we make this amendment.
Questions for Miss Vicky?
She'll spend sixty-three thousand dollars between now and December the thirty-first. That is still the end of the year, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Man.
I mean, if you.
And, and what we've done is we've kind of, hey, so we're up here to pay Paul, we move, we move, uh, budget from other line items that really need to be replenished. So we're kind of trying to even it all out. Plus, there'll be additional funding needed for the remainder of the year.
But your year-to-date expenditures is still an accurate number on what you've expended in that particular line item. So
Yes.
If you take seventy-eight thousand and write about eleven, we're in eleven months, seven thousand, as you well know, um, a month times two, which means what we have left is fourteen thousand, what we're asking for forty-three.
Yeah. Well, it's because. Like I said, we borrowed from our account. We, the one that we borrowed from is the account where we paid back to Hall County for their employee expenses. So because that all becomes periodic, we've just been moving money and so now we're like, okay, we need to do this before.
But your expenditures for that actual is.
For this actual is, is correct, yes.
Yeah.
And this is state mandated, is it not?
Yeah, it is.
So we don't have a choice?
We really don't. I mean, it's, it's just really, it's one of those line items that's almost impossible to budget for.
Of course.
Because you have no way of really knowing how many cases you're going to have, how many, you know, children are going to need attorneys and the parents. So it's, it's a requirement that the child has an attorney as well as the parents.
And that just started a couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago.
Where they had to both have attorneys, separate.
Separate attorneys, that way there's no.
And that's each parent.
Each parent has.
Not just the parents, each parent.
Yeah.
And the child, or child.
If there's more than one.
Approved by the state, that's it.
Yeah.
All your state representatives.
You know, when they mandate this stuff, if they would give us some money, it'd be nice, wouldn't it?
It would be great, but I don't look for that to happen.
Unfunded mandate. Other questions for Miss Vicky? Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have a presentation of F Y two thousand and nineteen third quarter financial report. Miss Vicky, you're up.
And I have two copies. I know you'd be liking to have that to make your notes on.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, well, it's hard to believe, but we completed the third quarter and are well into the fourth quarter of two thousand and nineteen. It's amazing to me how fast it goes, lots. First item we want to talk about, and this will be the, the focus of this presentation, is general funds. That's our principal operating funds of the county. We have twenty-three funds that we account for and, uh, but like I said, this is the main one that most people are interested in because that's where the property taxes go. Um, our fiscal year runs from January through December and as I said before, this report is for the third quarter through September thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen. Because it's the third quarter, our benchmark that we'll want to be looking at is seventy-five percent. So if we're close to that seventy-five percent, then everything's good. Primary sources of revenue for general fund is property tax and local option sales tax. Our original two thousand and nineteen budget was twenty-seven million, one hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars, which we have amended. Currently, uh, as of the end of the third quarter, the budget was amended to twenty-nine million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Year-to-date revenues stand at eighteen million, two hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. Spent is around twenty million, one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, which leaves us with a deficit of one point eight million dollars. However, that usually catches up in October, November and, um, this is a good example of why you have a good, strong fund balance. Because what happens is you have that fund balance and you, you're living on that until your tax revenue comes in. So, um, if we did not have that, we would be borrowing money short-term.
Have we got the, uh, insurance premium tax money yet?
We receive that every year, October fifteenth, and it was, uh, one point three.
That would show in this document.
No, it will not because that was in October. So in October, it's usually about the time that it catches up.
How much did you say?
One point three million. Y'all said our budget had been amended and these are the significant additions to the general fund budget, budget that we've made this year. Four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the CAD system, sixteen thousand for the smart bin settlement, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the two fire trucks. Nineteen thousand for the purchase of the leak monitor at the fuel center. Eighty-one hundred dollars for the land use plan update, a little over sixty thousand dollars for the laptops, air cards and mounts. A hundred thousand dollars for the contingency creation, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for legal fees, thirty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars, uh, for the addition of a physician and admin assistant in the marshal's office and twelve thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars to the library, um, which. and twelve thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars to the library, which is a total a little over one point nine million. This chart shows the, this is your budget by revenue type for general fund. It shows the dollar amount, and then the third column shows what percentage that makes up of the total budget. So if you're looking at this, your taxes and your local option sales tax make up more than seventy-eight percent of your revenue sources. The others are kind of small, but they all count. This next slide shows your budget to actual for your general fund revenues. Taxes are at seventy percent, local option sales taxes at sixty-six percent. Licenses and permits are at sixty-five percent. Charges for services, almost sixty-five percent. Intergovernmental revenues, almost seventy-five percent. Funds and forfeitures are at almost seventy percent. Investment income is at a hundred and eighty-five percent. Donations, and we don't budget for those, like at the beginning of the year, like when we just passed our budget in twenty-twenty for twenty-twenty. We don't budget for donations. We budget, we add them to the budget as they come in. That way, we're sure that, you know, we're gonna get pretty much everything that we budgeted for. So it's kind of a mid-year, all-through-the-year budget adjustment.
Well, I, I don't, what are donations? Does somebody give us money?
Yes, ma'am, there are things that are classified as donations.
Really?
Yeah, like for the park and senior center, different things.
Oh, yeah.
And so we, so we get, we get some donations.
Yeah, okay. Well, yeah, we got a big one, yes.
The miscellaneous is sixty-nine percent. For a total, as of the end of September, we're at sixty-two point two-four percent of what we budgeted for revenue. And this is just a, a picture. I like to see things in a graph, because it, to me, it makes it clear. So it shows that, you know, our taxes made up fifty-eight percent of everything that we've collected. Local option sales tax was the next largest, and it made up twenty-eight percent. And then charges for services are the third largest, at eight percent.
Now, where you have taxes, that means property taxes.
Yes, ma'am. Property taxes, motor vehicle taxes.
Oh, okay.
Um, insurance premium tax. I mean, there's a lot of different categories and taxes. It's not just property taxes. Okay, next we'll look at the expenditures by function. And what I mean by function is every department that we have in the county is grouped according to governmental county standards board by their function. And there's one, two, three, four, nine of those. You have general government, judicial, public safety, which is also including the sheriff. Then we have the sheriff, public works, health and welfare, recreation and culture, housing development, and other financing uses. So when you look at where we are at the end of September, in total, all of these total up sixty-eight point five-five percent. They've spent that much of the budget. And then later on, I'll show you by each department. So now we're gonna look at general government. And these are the departments that make up that general government function. You've got several. You have board commissioners, county administration, elections, general government, finance, county attorney, information technology, human resources, tax commissioner, tax assessor, board of equalization, risk management, facilities, and public relations. And so if you look down through here, there's a couple of departments that are actually over budget, but it'll be amended, you know, through the rest of the year. Really, the only one that I see as an issue is where we've got the county attorney, but that's all kind of lumped together. So that's why it makes it look higher than everyone else. For the most part.
Or because they should, too. That calls above somebody in the appeal?
Possibly, yeah. But see, they have finished the appeal period.
Okay.
So they probably won't have anything else.
Okay, that's good, that's.
And next we'll look at the judicial function, and that's made up of Superior Court, clerical court, district attorney, magistrate court, private court, juvenile court, and public defender. And all of these are right at seventy-five percent or below. In total, the judicial bracket is at seventy percent. They've spent seventy percent of the budget. The next group that we'll look at is sheriff. And the sheriff has multiple departments. And all his budgets together, excluding nine-one-one, because it's counted for in a separate fund, comes up to seven point six million dollars. Year-to-date, he has spent five point four. That puts in a total of, it's almost seventy-two percent of his budget. And then the other public safety departments, excluding the sheriff, are marshals, fire, fire marshal and prevention, emergency, medical services, coroner, EMA, and humane society. And all of these departments are right at seventy-five percent, except for the fire marshal. But they have such a small budget, it's only seventeen thousand dollars. So I, I don't look for them to go over budget in that department, because it's, it's not a large budget. They probably spent quite a bit of stuff all at one time, and so then it'll sort of trickle in the rest.
Education, interior.
Yes. So altogether, public safety is at sixty-three point nine-six percent of the budget. Did you have a question, sir? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, next we'll look at public works, and there's two departments that make up public works in the general fund. Total budget is a little over one point eight million. Year-to-date, they've expended a little over a million, and they're at fifty-five point nine-nine percent of their budget. The health and welfare function is made up of the health department, Good Shepherd Clinic, CASA, DFAX, No One Alone, Indigent Welfare. The general portion, general fund portion of the senior center, senior services donations, and medical, Medicaid, Medicare, I'm sorry, Silver Sneakers. So the total for all of these departments is three hundred and fifty-three thousand, four dollars. And year-to-date, they spent two hundred and thirteen thousand, and they're at sixty percent of the budget. Recreation and culture, that's primarily your park and your library. And so altogether, that totals one point seven million. Actual year-to-date is at one point two. Sorry, I didn't drink. We're sixty-nine percent, almost sixty-nine percent of others. Okay. Housing and development is made up of four departments, conservation, county extension, planning and development, and the development authority. In total, their budgets are seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand. They have spent five hundred and sixty-four thousand, and they're a little over seventy percent of the budget. Other financing uses are the transfers that we make from the general fund to other funds. There's a transfer out to Family Connection for grants, transfer out to capital, transfer out to fleet, transfer out to nine-one-one, and then the transfer out to the GIS department. Total budget for these transfers is three point two billion. Year-to-date, we've transferred two point four, a little over two point four, and we're almost at seventy-five percent of the budget.
What's the total cost for E-nine-one-one that, this is what we take out of the general fund? What do we get for a dollar fifty?
Their total budget. Couple of lines, yeah. They're at a little over a million dollars.
That's close.
Yeah, a little over a million. Okay, I also like to look at the expenditure by category, which is salaries, purchase contracts and services, supplies, capital outlay, inter-fund charges, other costs, debt service, and other financing uses. As you can see by looking at this category, at this slide, sixty percent of what we've spent in general fund goes to salaries and benefits. The next largest category would be other financing uses, and then the third would be purchase contracts and services. And then this chart kind of shows it graphically, sixty-one percent almost to salaries and benefits. Okay, then we have some other major funds that we account for. Nine-one-one, Family Connection, Grant Fund, Hotel Motel, SLOSS six, Capital Projects, the Solid Waste Fund, and Impact Fees. This just, this chart shows what was budgeted, what they had received year-to-date, and what has been expensed year-to-date. I won't go through each one, just so y'all can look at it. Next we'll look at SLOSS, SLOSS six. SLOSS six started July of two thousand and sixteen, and it will end June of two thousand and twenty-one. SLOSS resolution was for forty-six million dollars, and the county's portion is eighty-five percent, the city's portion is fifteen percent. SLOSS collections to date is a little over, well, it's almost thirty-three million dollars. And September two thousand and nineteen is month fifty, and there's twenty-two months remaining. Year-to-date revenues, and this includes interest, is five million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. And year-to-date expenses are five point one million.
Do you know the trend line on when, if we maintain that current revenue with SLOSS, what the date would be that we would collect out?
No, I've calculated out what I think the projected amount would be. I think it would be a little over forty-seven million if it continues the way that we're.
Okay.
SLOSS six, the.
You can keep the SLOSS.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, you can. It's, there's, there's different departments that are recipients of the SLOSS. You've got information technology, sheriff, fire, roads, parks, and then payments to the city. So right now, as I said before, we've spent a little over five point one million dollars this year. But out of this amount, over three point eight, you've got to add an additional three point eight million to that, and it's already encumbered. There's P O S issue for it, so it's, it's pretty close. Impact fees, the rate stated August of two thousand and eighteen, collections since August, total of one point one million. Collections just in two thousand and two, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Impact fees can be used for library, parks, fire, and roads. And so far through September, we had only spent a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and they went towards the purchase of the fire truck. So in total, at the end of the third quarter, for all funds, the total budget was fifty million, four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. Revenue collected were twenty-nine million, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars, for fifty-nine point four percent of the budget. And we have thirty-one million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars in expenditures for sixty-one point eight percent of the budget. In conclusion, Dawson County continues to be a good steward of citizens' money, and it's projected that fiscal year nineteen will end in a positive financial position. And I would like to thank all the departments and the elected officials, and for your support throughout the year, and your guidance. You've all been a very good board to work with this year, and I think you're all very fiscally minded, and I certainly appreciate that. And this presentation will be available on the county website tomorrow.
Questions for Miss Vicki?
Thank you, thank you for this, it's very good.
Very good, I hope you all enjoy it.
Yes.
Hope it, hope it helps you and the public, because I think it's important that they understand the needs that people are doing with their money and stuff.
Vicki, back to you and your staff.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
I've read staff, I'm very nice with what they're doing.
Like you mentioned, Department of Defense, too. It's, uh, looking at the new budget, you'd see a lot of the NASTRO, it was very little increases, other than some capital freedoms.
The department has, it's a bill like.
They watch your money, though.
Yes, they do, they do a great job, too.
The one thing that's a continuous theme, as you look throughout it, is about every one of them, a little bit of seventy-five percent cut. Which is the mark, as you say, for the end of third quarters, so. They are doing a good job, and you and your staff, obviously, are doing an excellent job, and we appreciate everything that you do and all the staff do. Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have a presentation of board appointments. First up, the Belvin Authority, Jerry Allen replacing Joel Hannah, January twenty twenty through December twenty twenty-three. And from Planning Commission, Alden from District Three, Tony Passarella, deployment January twenty twenty through December twenty twenty-one. And you have both of their resumes in your packet, and so I will submit those two people for board appointment. I'll attempt to ask for any questions, if you have any, in reference to those. And we're happy that people volunteered to serve on the board, because we have lots of openings. And I am constantly, as I speak, to the different groups, asking for volunteers. So if you're sitting out there, and you want to volunteer for something, we'd be glad to have you.
Who will be on those?
Twenty-first.
Any questions? County manager before.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, the Gov. Deal sales has ended, and folks continue to pick up the items. So far, Gov. Deals has collected twenty-three thousand dollars from the sale, and is expected to collect a total of approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars once everything's picked up and paid off. That money, as you know, will go towards the vehicle replacement policy, or fund, I'm sorry, out of the, of the policy. Repaving of Kilo Church Road was completed this week, and that work was completed by county staff. As you know, this year's trunk-or-treat Halloween event at Rock Creek Park was moved into sign due to the weather. But I've been told it was enormously successful, and that, and his crew did a tremendous job out there, and attracted a great crowd. The Senior Center's tenth annual art by the Young, uh, Young at Heart Art Show is coming up on Saturday, December the seventh. The show will be held at the Senior Center from ten AM to noon, and with entertainment kicking off at ten-thirty. Pleased to also announce that our finance department, as you mentioned earlier, they've done a superb job, but they have yet again received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the current budget from the Government Finance Officers Association. This award is the highest form of recognition in the government budgeting, and I'd like to congratulate Vicki and her, her team on earning this honor yet again. Congratulations to you all. Just a reminder that Veterans Day is Monday. County offices will be closed, and the annual Veterans Day ceremony and parade will be held in downtown. The program will begin at two PM at the junior high school, followed by the parade at three-thirty PM. Also on Monday, very important day, will be the Olive Garden will be officially open, so. Make sure you get down there, too. Also excited to announce that the county's new website rolled out on Friday, which, uh, November the first, which you'll learn more about, uh, the, later on in the voting session, Laura will be presenting that PowerPoint to you, and what that looks like today. Other than that, that concludes my report.
Questions of the county manager?
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
County attorney before.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just have a brief update on the employee handbook. Um, did not want you to think that had been lost or forgotten. Um, that was presented to you previously at a work session by the former Human Resources Director, Lisa Green. With Brad Gould coming on board, we have gotten his input. Brad and Dave and I met this week to address some additional questions and issues, and make some additional revisions. I'm anticipating that we'll present that to you at the first of next week, so that you'll have plenty of time to review that in advance of November twenty-first, and then it will come to you on November twenty-first. I just did not want you to be rushed into it today, because we are still tinkering with language. It's a large handbook, and, um, and I have continued to want to make some adjustments. And so with that all in mind, I wanted to provide you with an update on that schedule. Um, I'll take responsibility for us to take a little bit longer. I also just wanted to be sure that Brad was in the mix, since he'll be implementing and administering the book. I also just wanted to be sure that Brad was in the mix, since he'll be implementing and administering the book going forward. But I believe we'll bring that to you on November twenty-first, and if you see fit at that time, you could adopt it. Otherwise, I think the goal would be to get it adopted so that it could be effective for January one. If you have any questions at this time, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll be bringing that to you, so you will have plenty of review time and can answer your questions individually as you get that document.
Questions for the county attorney? I have one. Do we have any need for a executive session?
You know, there's, we have a few minutes. There's one brief issue that you brought up to me, Chairman, that we could handle that is threatened litigation.
Okay. All right, so, I'll entertain a motion to go in the executive session for litigation. Mr. Siderfield? Second, Mr. Next discussion. Three, none, please, votes. And that's pretty formal, it takes about five minutes to go into the executive session. The judge will be no vote coming out of that.
Mr. Fong.